Approval of the agenda. Second. Okay, we have one item on the agenda. It's for fireworks permit for August 27th, I believe, for the Colonel Bowl. They want to do fireworks at the end of the football game, I believe. Any... Lyndon, anything?
I don't think you can make it tonight. We've got our insurance information.
And this is, this is Star Fireworks again, or Jennifer again. Done it before. Typically, we do put the condition that if we're in a burn ban or whatever, we'll contact the fire department to have, and I'm assuming they might be on site anyway. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on fireworks permit? And it's at Joe Koino.
It is.
Okay. If, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. And I, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. We adjourn.
Done concluded, huh? Having fireworks. Oh, you have a invocation from First Lutheran tonight? Yes. Oh?
I'm here from First Presbyterian. I had it on my calendar, but this is what the schedule says, so I'm glad to offer one for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let us pray. Holy One, we thank you that your presence is ever with us and ask that we would be very aware this evening of your presence and your wisdom and your will as we do the work of this community. We ask these things in your loving name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Olson, Rice.
Here.
Tronis.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Barrington.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Charks.
Here.
Smith.
Approval of the consent agenda items. Items appearing on the consent agenda may be removed by a city council member for a discussion at the beginning of the formal agenda items. Anything from anyone? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to...
I do have one comment.
Sorry.
Tim had mentioned that on the pay estimates, there is a, one of them that shows it's over contract, and he said that he will have a change order for your next meeting. He just caught that one.
Yeah, there was one.
Right here. So he will have a change order for you at the next meeting.
So do we make the motion then for the, with consideration toward that change order that is the next meeting?
Um, well, or if you would like to, you could go up until, you could authorize that one up to the contract amount of eighty-eight. I can't see that far away. I apologize.
Eighty-eight, six eighty-seven, seventy-five.
Thank you. And then the remainder would have to be submitted at the next meeting with the change order.
Eighty-eight, six eighty-seven? Okay, then I'd entertain a motion then with the, with the, uh, the pay, the, uh, what did I, what did I say here? Contract amount up to eighty-eight thousand, six eighty-seven, seventy-five. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Go ahead. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Charks.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Tronis.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Okay, next is the citizens' input. If you need to address the mayor and members of the city council on an item that was not on the agenda, excluding personnel items, please come forward to the podium and state your name and your concern. Presentations are limited to three minutes. Items will be considered, will be considered, but no action will be taken at this time. No public input. Anybody on the council have anything to say? Hearing nothing, then we'll...
Yeah, I do have some.
Oh, okay.
I just thought of it. Um, last year, we were asked by the Exchange Club if we would take a day, and I'll, I'll email everybody else to check your schedules. And so the big, state baseball tournament's starting Wednesday, so not this Saturday, but next Saturday, the thirteenth. They wanted to know if we would take the afternoon session, which basically starts at eleven. So there would be a group that would start at ten, and then it completes around three o'clock or so. And so look at your schedules. If you can give us an hour or two, or the whole time. Uh, I've already committed, so I don't want to do it solo. And so we've had department heads join us too, and it actually is a lot of fun. It's, and that was, that's the day that the semifinals are at, so there'll be a lot of people at the ballpark. So take a look at your schedule. If it works out, great. And I'll send an email out, and then you can let me know kind of the, if you're able to make it, then what times you can.
Since I just joined the Exchange Club, I suppose you better mark me down.
Oh, okay. You're in, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments? Okay, then we'll move on to the committee report. Public health and safety.
Public health and safety met at six thirty. Uh, we had one item on the agenda. It was for fireworks permit for Joe Koino Field for August twenty-seventh after the, the first annual Colonel Bowl. And, uh, we, the only discussion was to make sure if there's a burn ban in place at that time that we contact the fire department, and the fire department will most likely be on site anyway. Uh, that was our only item of business. It passed on a unanimous vote, and we adjourned at six thirty-two.
Motion to approve?
Some of.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Here. He turned his TV on. Okay, we have hearings here. Versus the application to transfer retail on-off sale malt beverage license, RB-20236, and retail on-off sale wine license, RW-20237, from Jean Blaylet, 515 East Spruce Street, Mitchell, South Dakota, to Jean Blaylet, 800 West Spruce Street, Mitchell, South Dakota. License will be inactive. Background check was recently completed on their malt beverage renewal, and property taxes are current. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next hearing is on the application of the Mitchell Elks Club, number 1059, for a special event liquor license located at the Masonic Lodge on August the twentieth, 2016, for the Shriner's sixtieth anniversary. Another one for August the twenty-seventh, 2016, for a wedding. And the last one is September eighth, 2016, for the NRA banquet.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, on, next is on the application of the Palace City Lions Club for a special event malt beverage license located at the southwest corner of the Hitchcock Park on August the twentieth, 2016, for the Tour de Corn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, board of adjustment. I would entertain a motion for the city council to recess instead as a board of adjustment.
Move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next is action to set the date for the board of adjustment hearing of August the fifteenth, 2016, which is a hearing on the application of Sarah Bailey for a conditional use permit to operate a family residential childcare facility in her home located at 308 East Seventh Avenue, legally described as Lot Nine, Block One, Raleigh's First Edition, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, Zone R2, single-family residential district.
Move to set the date.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Action to set date for board of adjustment hearing of August fifteenth, 2016, which is a hearing on the application of Angela and Bonnie Jones, who are the applicant, and, and Boyd and Kay Reimnitz, owner, for a conditional use permit to operate a home occupation slash retail business in display of artwork in the applicant's home located at 414 West Seventh Avenue, legally described as east one-half of block lots nine and ten, Block Three, Raleigh's Second Edition, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, which is Zone R2, single-family residential district. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Hearing on Brad Bauer, 2501 Anthony Avenue, on the application for Brad Bauer for a height variance of twenty-five feet versus twenty-three feet for construction of a building to be located at 2501 Anthony Avenue, legally described as Lot Fourteen, Block Nine, CJM Second Edition, IT Number Three, Northwest One Quarter Section of, Section Thirty-two, T One O Four North, R Sixty West of the Fifth PM, City of Mitchell, Davidson County, South Dakota, Zone Plan Development District.
Move to set the date.
Nope, this is a hearing.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
Okay, just, uh, if, if I bring, took your attention to the planning commission minutes of, um, July the twenty-fifth, you would see that the planning commission did hold a hearing on this request and did recommend approval on a six-oh vote. Um, again, this is out on the Anthony Avenue. There's a map showing, it's kind of right on the corner lot. If you take Anthony and, or almost right in the dead end where, and then it starts to turn north. Mr. Bauer is here if you've got more specific questions of him.
Um, so our current ordinance would pre...
Can I hear your line, please?
Oh, sorry. So our current ordinance would preclude someone from having, um, a large camper in it?
If it was twen-, the rest of the city, most of the city is twenty-two feet, but this is a Chuck Junior, or Chuck Senior's, um, Plan Development District, and then their, his ordinance is twenty-three feet. So he's asking for an exception of theirs. So, yeah, so it's a height variance. He's, right now, if this was in the other parts of town, it would be twenty-two feet, but it, because of his own development, his restriction's twenty-three. So he's asking for...
So regardless, I, so ours is less. Ours is twenty-two feet, so we don't have an ordinance that's going to accommodate a large trailer. That's my question. I was surprised.
Well, that, yeah, we do. Ours is twenty-two, but, you know, sometimes they can't, they, it depends on how big they want to make their sidewalls. It depends if they want to put a loft on and so forth. But, so sometimes twenty-two works fine, you know. It just depends on what kind of roof, what kind of structure they want to put on top. And that's why years ago, we, when we did, redid the zoning code, we moved it up from seventeen to twenty-two to accommodate that. But again, it just kind of depends on what kind of roof they want to put on. If they want to put a loft or...
Yeah, I see that the storage loft is part of the...
I'll, yeah, he's here.
Well, I, I see the, what the planning commission voted all in favor of it, and, and the individual that owns the, um, the development wrote a, a letter that he is not opposed to it. And, and all the letters that sent out, there wasn't any responses negatively. So I'm going to vote, or make a motion to vote in favor of it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion.
And my, my point was really more in question about why we don't have a high in the ordinance for people that have big trailers, because we have a late term.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, usually the twenty-two meets it, you know. But again, if it's, depends on, if they want to put a roof or a loft or something, then that usually then has to go a little higher.
Okay, motion car-, motion carried. Entertaining motion for the board of adjustment to adjourn in the city council to reconvene in regular session?
Some move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five forty-seven, an ordinance revising Sections two dash four dash two and two dash four dash four of the Mitchell City Code regarding the imposition of the lodgings, alcoholic beverages, and prepared food tax, and the appropriation of the funds thereof. I know we have somebody, someone in the audience that wants to speak, so Jeff, do you want to come forward now?
Before we get started on that, I'll just give you a brief overview. I know a lot, a lot of people are here to speak tonight, and they'll have much more to say than I will. Um, I just want to remind the council that this ha, the, the proposed change has basically two different aspects. Uh, the first change you'd be looking at is adding on ticket sales to the current tax. Um, as we discussed previously, those ticket sales are not currently in the ordinance, but they are authorized by state law. Uh, I'm sure Jeff will be able to give you more of the background and history on that. Uh, the second real change that we're talking about tonight is the appropriation of those funds. Right now, the percentages are set by ordinance, which is kind of an anomaly statewide. And, what this change would do was just allow it to be set by the council each year as it does for the remainder of the budget. So with that, I'll hand it off.
Yeah, Jeff?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you for letting me speak to this. Uh, and I guess it's necessary, and I'll do this as quickly as I can, to go into a brief history of this. Uh, in nineteen eighty-six, the South Dakota Legislature, uh, adopted the legislation that authorized the, what was then referred to as bed and booze tax. Later, it was called the bed, booze, and board tax, or three B tax. Um, and I have to admit, uh, some negligence and naivete. Uh, the press was referring to it as bed and booze. It was mainly a bill that was put through to make possible building the Barnett Center, and that's what was really behind it. Uh, the bed and booze idea was that as visitors come to town, and it authorized it for any town to do it, uh, as visitors came to town, um, that we tax them. We will tax the out-of-towners. And, um, uh, and then that'll pay for our infrastructure, which is bringing them to town and helping business. Um, bed, booze, and board. The board is restaurants. We often think of it. It's not a bed board. It's your board at the table. And, uh, an ancient term which has lost its, its meaning in modern usage. But at any rate, uh, admission tickets were never used in any of the publicity about it, any of the information. Very frankly, I read about it, and I said, okay, that's nice. We tax the tourists, and we're going to get this, and good deal. And it only can go, the money can only be used for capital improvements, municipal facilities, primarily auditoriums, arenas, ballparks, things like that, like the Barnett Center. So, um, the bill passed through the legislature, the session ended, and somewhere along the line, someone found that it said admission tickets in there, and that theaters would be included. And all of us in the, in my business, in the theater business, said, oh, we weren't aware of that. Now, we should have read the bill in detail, but, and it's a good lesson, but we didn't do it. So I called our local legislators. I got referred to the author of the bill. I got referred to LRC, who drafts the bills. And LRC sent me to, they said, well, the man who really drafted the bill for us was a professor from the Business School at USD. So I talked to him, and he said, well, our idea in including admission taxes was to tax those auditoriums and those civic facilities that are built so that they pay, um, pay a tax that they can then retire their bonds, and they pay their own way, that they're bringing in money to help pay for the facility, that that's one of the ways we're going to do it. And he said, what do you mean, movie theaters? And I said, well, we're admission tickets. He said, well, we never thought about you guys. We didn't mean to put you in there. And I said, well, it seems pretty obvious to me, admission ticket, movie theater, first thing most people think of. And, um, he laughed, and he said, well, I'm sorry. I guess we caught you in our net. And I said, well, you can laugh, but, um, you aren't paying the tax. Uh, the problem is, um, everyone is for, uh, high school athletics, and my kids benefited, and I enjoy games and everything else. But the, the fact remains that from a business standpoint, the night of a home game, we staff a lot smaller staff because we know we're going to have a lot smaller crowd. So I told the professor, you are in effect asking us to, uh, with this tax, to support our competition. Um, so he said, well, it's too late now. We looked a couple of years at trying to go to the legislature and, uh, get the, the thing revised, and we were pretty much advised every year because of budget shortfalls, which sound real familiar, uh, that that just isn't going to happen. So, uh, we didn't, and we lived with it. Um, however, when this tax came up in Mitchell, I went to, uh, the mayor and the council at that time. Uh, this was in nineteen eighty-eight. Told them the story, and they said, you know, we really don't need it. It isn't that much that's going to come out of it in Mitchell, and we just won't include you. The same thing happened in Brookings. Now evidently, in Brookings later years, they then added it in. And so Dick was asleep at the switch up there, or not as persuasive. Yeah. Um, so at any rate, um, uh, that's, that's what happened with it. Uh, now we put it in. The, one of the problems with an admission tax, if you tax a retailer, the price of their goods is whatever the price is, nine ninety-five, plus sales tax. In a ticket, because of the nature of a ticket and handling lots of people and, and the logistics of making change and carrying enough coins on hand, uh, you don't do that. And, uh, so it's, it's into the price. So we back the taxes out. So a nine-dollar ticket, we back it out, and our net ticket is so much. We're already paying fifty-five percent on the average film rental to the studio for the movie. Uh, right now, we're paying six and a half percent. We were paying six percent, uh, four percent state and two percent city sales tax. This past January, it went up half a percent to give the teachers a raise, which I totally agree with, and I think we're all in support of. So now, um, within the year, uh, in Mitchell at least, we're being asked to pay, uh, an extra percent. Um, the legislation that authorized this was ill-conceived, and I'll say a lot of it was ill-conceived because even that thought of, we're going to tax a ticket so this facility can pay for itself. The problem is, is with the exception of maybe the Sanford Center or the Sioux Falls Arena, uh, perhaps Rapid City Civic Center, the vast majority of, of activities in those centers are school athletics and school facility things, and they're not taxable. So they don't pay the tax. So the only people who are going to pay this tax in the Corn Palace and in the various areas are going to be private promoters. We don't have a lot of private promoters coming to Mitchell. Uh, so who's going to pay it? There's one business. Me. Generally, I thought of taxes as we all pay them, we all share, and we bear the burden, and we, we support government and the common good. Uh, we're already paying a six and a half percent tax besides some of the highest property taxes downtown. Um, the problem is, is that this tax, for a private business, it's, um, charging one person, and not really me, because I'm going to have to pass it through, so it's on the moviegoers. Uh, this is an interesting time to tax, say, well, it's a luxury tax, and we'll charge the theaters. It's a discretionary. Theaters are looking at the situation of we have more competition all the time with home delivery systems, Netflix and video on demand and various systems, and we're constantly hearing the complaint about it costs too much to go to the movies and blah, 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 and I can't afford it, and I'll stay home and I'll save the money. And so now you want us to raise our ticket prices again. Besides us as a business, who's going to pay it? It's going to be the only ones left who are going to pay this, because we don't have a roller skating rink that sells tickets. We don't have a racetrack that sells tickets. What we're going to have paying it are the various sports and the various nonprofits who do concerts and things, and the club sports. School sports won't. Show choir won't. But who will? The hospital won't. But who will are Mitchell baseball, softball, hockey, those sports that are already running on thin budgets. ACT will pay it. ACT is on a thin budget and, um, struggles to break even every year. And, uh, I don't think I'm breaking a confidence that last year, they operated at a loss. So now, these are the people being taxed. It's one business, and it's a bunch of people who are trying to do good for the city, who are trying to help the youth, and who are trying to raise money. So the, uh, who you're taxing, um, I, I would question who you're taxing. The, the tax was ill-conceived because of that type of thing. I think in every city it went through. It was ill-conceived in the beginning by this business professor, and I hate to say that. I attended USD. But it was ill-conceived. It was poorly worded, uh, and it was good intentions. Turned out to bad legislation that as in this case happens, unintended consequences. And that's really what happened. The bill was wrong then, and to extend it now in Mitchell is wrong now. And I would just say that two wrongs don't make a right. I know we're the only city left, but very frankly, in most of the other, uh, cities in Mitchell, in the larger cities, you've got major out-of-state corporations who are running the theaters, and their managers aren't aware of local politics that goes through. They aren't going to do anything about it. That's the way it is. And in the small towns, it's mom and pops are keeping it open as their hobby job, and they got a day job and so forth, or it's a nonprofit corporation like Armor and, and some of the other towns. So at any rate, um, uh, this, uh, I would just ask that you don't extend it to admission tickets, uh, because of what you're doing, who you're taxing. One business, I don't believe that's fair, and, and my customers. If it goes, if you authorize it, the day after it's authorized, that following Friday, which is our accounting week, when we start the new movie, and we start paying the film rentals and accounting to the film studio, we will raise our adult ticket by twenty-five cents. You say, well, it's only nine cents on each ticket, but I'm not going to raise a child price, because I think it's too much a burden on the families already. I'm not going to raise the seniors, or we have a junior price for students under sixteen, twelve to sixteen. So the ad, but by doing the adult price, we can distribute it out to the rest. If anyone asks why the price go up, I'll tell them. That's why. City raises the taxes. That's how we got to do it. So, um, like I say, because I know this rather obscure history of the bill, I wish I had the professor's name. Uh, I wish I had a recording of it, but A, that's illegal. I don't have my file anymore because it was, as we refer to it in our company now, BF. It was before FIRE. And I don't have those records. So, but that's, that's what happened, and, and, uh, uh, that's the story on it. So I just ask that, that the amount of money you will get and, um, uh, we don't have to put this out. Generally, you're going to get, eh, eight grand out of me a year. I don't know where you're going to get sixty, because the, the rest of it, out of ACT and out of the nonprofits, I don't know where you're going to come up with sixty thousand dollars. I don't think it's going to be a significant number. Um, so, you know, the additional one percent. So, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Jeff, how do you feel about, Jeff and I have had a conversation about this already, but, um, this was something that we didn't discuss. How do you feel about the fact that the Corn Palace itself would be generating revenue using this through concert tickets and...
Very few, because the city doesn't pay the sales tax on them. So the only ones will be when you have a private promoter in here.
Well, no. Yeah. Go ahead.
You do pay sale, state sales tax?
On every concert that's, that happens within the city.
Because you know, when I was on Corn Palace Committee, the, the, we didn't, so you'll get, you'll get a little bit.
We do pay sales tax, yeah.
But that's the intention of the bill.
Yeah. So that's my point. I mean...
But we're swept in the net. Again, subsidizing our competition.
I know. And you're also, you're already doing it in Shura, and you're doing it in Del Rapids.
We are, but I would say too, that in those cities, we have much smaller physical plants. We can run them with smaller staffs, and, uh, I don't have the debt load, because I don't have the size or the newness of, of the facility. So we work out our economics there. We charge a whole different price structure in Del Rapids anyway. And, um, I mean, yes, uh, we pay it in the other towns, but we make adjustments there that I can't make in Mitchell, so I have to... that I can't make in Mitchell, so I have to raise prices.
Where did the 60 to 80,000 dollar increase revenue, where did that projection come from?
The Department of Revenue figure. We can't, my understanding is if you enact the fourth category, you can't exempt one business, it's either all or none.
Right, it's a category or none. That's what we were told back in 80, 88 at least, so same, same conversation back then.
I guess I did tell in my report as well as to the council here that I would update you on any additional cities that reported that they use it. I, I did not hear back from anyone else from Thursday, so these are the only ones I heard back from, um, in the survey and they are all doing all four categories, not all of them started with all four.
The major cities adopted it first and then the smaller towns like Hartford, Del Rapids came on in later years.
I don't understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Stephanie, you don't have a breakdown from the Department of Revenue?
No, I don't have it. We did call out, it's based on the taxable sales in that category for our area. So it's just an estimate. Um, I guess if you look at the taxable sales at the Corn Palace alone, um, we could get you what the Corn Palace would provide, but I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, but the Corn Palace tickets are, are not going to include the school, the basketball games.
Um, I'm talking about concert tickets?
Yeah, concert tickets would, right.
Which the revenue for that, we just looked at it.
Take 1% of the growth from shows last year, yeah.
200,000, somewhere around that 250, maybe.
So you got two grand, two grand from the Corn Palace. Yeah.
I think that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, now probably the rides, so the carnival I would guess would pay it, that's another one. You know, and it's been, you know, different uses for it again, if, depending what you put on, the, the uses are so, um, limited, uh, by statute of what they can be used for. I don't believe it can be used for the street skate.
You don't think you can?
I don't believe, I, you'd need an Attorney General's opinion.
It has been used for street skates in other cities, yep, you can use it for land construction, architectural design piece.
That would take care of maybe, I mean, you might say, "Well, then I might at least say I could justify it as it wouldn't be, it would move from the unfair tax category to like, if you're in a mall, you're paying CAM charges, common area maintenance, you know, keep the parking lot and the halls waxed." At least I could say it's keeping the neighborhood good and, and I might go along with it, but that's not necessarily gonna do anything for baseball, softball, hockey, ACT, I don't know how they feel. Uh, rodeo is, they would pay. I know Lance was here earlier, uh, I don't know if he's coming back. Um, I, I believe he wanted to address council on it too for the rodeo committee, who also, again, they're basically trying to, you know, they're putting on the event and, and doing charitable work, so.
Jeff, you mentioned that, you know, Huron does charge for all four of these categories. Are their ticket sales in, higher than what our ticket sales are here in Mitchell?
In, in Huron, ticket sales are astronomical because of the state fair, but as far as mine, much less in Mitchell because very frankly, they have a depressed economy, they've lost a lot of businesses, they lost the college and they have a smaller trade area. So, yeah, our volume up there is much lower and hence we have one less screen and a much smaller footprint of square footage, so.
Justin, Cindy Gregg was here last time and indicated that she probably would be involved and the more we talked, we didn't know if it would be, but it says on here museums is, oh, is that what?
She's, she's exempt from paying this.
Historic site?
Historic site, yeah.
Historic sites are exempt.
I did include that in your, um, report just so you could see what she was referring to. I think that was just used as an example and, um, but you can see nonprofit historic sites, emissions are exempt.
The, the other thing I'll say too...
But if the sales are, um, subject to the tourism tax, they are not exempt.
And, um, the other thing I mentioned is we are already paying this tax on our prepared food. So we are bearing that burden, uh, because you were going after restaurants. So, uh, fountain pop is prepared food, it's prepared on premises, when you pour it in the cup. Um, popcorn is a prepared food, nachos and pretzels, candy bars are not. So in our inventory, we have to break out the candy bars. We pay 7.5% now on popcorn and soda and we pay 6.5% on candy. It keeps bookkeepers busy and provides chops.
Jeff, I have to say, I feel the pain.
Yeah.
I understand completely.
Yes, C-stores pay it on, on the prepared food.
I mean, our, our slushes, our fountain pop, our coffee, our cappuccinos, those are all of course at the 7.5%.
Right.
And then of course, we have the 4.5 and the 6.5 and then we have on top of that the resale and the EBT and then on top of that, we have the EBT, your SNAP customers that come in and say, "I want this slush," and you have to tell them that you cannot buy that item with the SNAP card.
Not a nutritional food, yeah.
You know, I, I totally understand what you're paying, but I, I have to say, I totally thought that this was already being done. When it was brought to our intention, I was so surprised that ticket sales were not already part of the entertainment tax in Mitchell.
And, and, and my point is that it was not sold to the public in the legislature that way. It was a misrepresentation and it was poorly worded and, and poorly thought out that ticket sales should be included, um, other than maybe for those municipal facilities, but again, I don't know how you break it out. And, and I do, I feel for the legislators, how do you write law that's fair to everyone and cover, "Yeah, but what if?" and the what if, and the what if? And, um, so it's very difficult, but, um, that's true, they should not have been because we get some tourist business, but it's not significant. We don't do a lot of tourists, uh, out of, you know, you go on a vacation, you don't normally go to a movie, you go to Disney World or something, but you don't necessarily go to a movie, you, you might. Um, and, uh, same thing, if you're going to a ballgame out of town, you don't normally, you know, to a tournament, you don't normally go to a movie. You're watching the other games, you're maybe shopping, you're just, it, it's, uh, why admission, admission tickets were thrown in it defies logic and, and the logic of the professor, he admitted was wrong, so.
But at the same token, I am, my business, for instance, doesn't see much for vacationers or much for tourists. I depend on the local economy.
That, that was their...
And I'm stuck.
Difficulty writing the definition of prepared food.
And I'm stuck.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I'm stuck with dealing with all the consequences of it. And, and I have to say, I am certainly leaning towards, I, I, I think that it needs to go this direction because we also have year after year needs or wants, maybe I should say better, for things that we want to do to push forward things such as, you know, we had presented to us here this evening for our Main Street and beyond, for things that we really wanna see happen here in the city of Mitchell. And, and I realize the bookkeeping is not fun and I realize that, you know, having to look somebody in the eye and say that you have to pay another tax at a certain location, I totally realize that it's not fun. I, I can empathize with you completely and like I said, I get my SNAP customer there and they want that can of pop or that, that fountain item and I have to say, "I'm sorry, I cannot sell it to you." And they, "Well, why not? It's, it's a drink." And I go, "But it's, it's not the same as selling you the bottle out of the cooler. It's just not the same."
That's right.
It's a pain.
Well, and I would say that we're, we are paying the same tax burden everyone else pays, we're, we're paying the 6.5 and in some cases 7.5, but to be singled out, to be singled out as the one business, when do you then, I mean, where, where does this end? Does it go to, all of a sudden, we're going to single out, you know, bowling alleys, banks, whatever business, we can go down the line of any of our businesses, we're gonna tax them and them alone because, why? Because we think there's some money there, because we think you benefit more than someone else from the streets? I, I, I mean, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, um, it was poorly conceived in the beginning, still is.
Honestly, your name didn't come up. We didn't even think about...
Didn't come up in the legislature either.
We didn't think about this situation affecting you.
Yeah.
The first thing that was talked about in that meeting, as I recall, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, was the fact that we would have the opportunity to add the tax to the ticket, such as what we see in, you know, when we buy a concert ticket almost anywhere else, which is what we expect, um, that is what we thought about. We were not even, it didn't even cross our minds, Jeff, so certainly this council was not, was not singling it out.
And I know you didn't, but, that's why I'm trying to, but that's the effect of the action that's under consideration.
So let me just, we, we've kind of gone back and forth on this. So I'm thinking, you, you say that you're being singled out, but then you could say that every theater owner in the state of South Dakota is being singled out because they too are paying this tax.
Yes.
And we just had a presentation from Brian Heisel a few, a little bit ago, I guess it's been a couple of hours ago, um, and he talked about how, uh, we're competing with the Sioux Falls and we're competing with, you know, all of these places, we're having fewer people spending money here, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that we're in the process of trying to, um, figure out how we can increase revenues to make our community better and have more appealing, blah, blah, blah. And I don't need to tell you how important revenue is when you're trying to drive a city. And so the problem that I have with this, and I, and I said this to you the other night, but the problem that I have with it is that I can look out and say, "Well, Sioux Falls, for every ticket sale they're making, those theaters are getting a tax. That, they're, that money is going into the coffers for Sioux Falls and, and Huron's getting it and Yankton's getting, I don't know, Brookings, everyone's getting it, but we're not." And I feel like, I, I feel like, you know, we need that, Jeff, we need the revenue.
Well, and I can answer that. I, I mean, every, every government body needs money and every business needs, needs money and you wouldn't expect to take $8,000 from me a year and not have me scream.
Yes, but I'm not taking...
And someone once said, "Mitchell is not taking advantage of this tax." And I would say that's exactly the point, taking advantage of, taking advantage of one specific group of person. If you, and, and do you know what the biggest complaint I hear about the theaters in Sioux Falls? Because they're beautiful theaters. I went to the show in Sioux Falls the other night, "Man, I'll never go back there, the cost was so much, do you know how much it cost me for this, this and this and this?" And that's the biggest complaint I hear is taxes, or is the prices, rather.
But consider that we're talking about...
And taxes, a big part of that.
We're talking about nine cents per ticket, less than a dime per ticket. I mean, that's the other part of me that's saying, we're talking about the...
And when you add that up at the end of the year, it changes your budgeting process.
I get that, I do, I get that.
I mean, let, let's put an extra tax on blinds, you know, while...
Okay, I don't need to pay them, but okay.
There we go.
You go first.
While you've got the, while you've got the mail order people at BudgetBlinds.com who are not paying it.
Entertainment blinds, I'm scared.
Yeah, so, so that's the problem.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, I do know what you're saying, but I have a hard time...
And, and, you know, and there have been attempts, and I know this isn't that, and I know no one's attacking me and I know all that, but, and I understand and, and there's no animosity and we're gonna, you know, we're all gonna, uh, you know, have lunch and a drink tomorrow kind of thing too, it's, nothing's gonna go on.
Yeah, we're all gonna...
After the meeting, you let me know. Um, the, you know, and there have been attempts over the years at, well, let's tax movie theaters, for instance, um, and every one of those has been struck down on constitutional grounds because it was a freedom of speech issue. So, in, in this respect, I mean, you're doing all admission tickets, so it's a broader category. Yes, it's legal, but, uh, taxes are a slippery slope and what's fair? And like I say, it, it isn't necessarily me, it's my customers are gonna pay it and we're a, even though we're often criticized as being high-priced, we're also, for an out-of-the-home entertainment, we are probably the most affordable, uh, and, and that's who you're affecting. It's, it's gonna raise prices and I, because it has to. I, I can't, you know, pay nine cents out of that when I'm already paying, um, 6.5% coming out and 55% to the studio. You know, that doesn't leave me a lot for mortgage, payroll, utilities, repairs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Obviously, it's definitely disappointing that, that the movie theaters have to be part of this, um, this tax, but I, I know I've been visiting with Jeff quite a bit for actually some, some years now about, um, the ticket sales and how the tax order, you know, I'm a person that likes to do a lot of entertainment and my family does a lot of, um, places that they go and we, it's just so common to expect to see some type of tax on that end of dollar thing. My daughter just got some tickets to a big show and she made like $34 and some extra entertainment taxes, you know, just like earth shattering, but they're paying it because they're going to Minneapolis and whatever it may be, but it's just so common, I guess, today's society that people expect to have that tax on the backside. It's nice that we haven't had it there, but I just think for us to try to keep on moving forward and better ourselves here in this community, Jeff, I, I really think it's something that we need to do. And it's sad, I wish we could single out movie tickets. I, we go to the movie theater all the time and obviously I know when I go there next, I'm gonna pay some more money to do it, but, uh, I'll still be there, I'm still gonna pay that a higher tax, but I just think it's something that we, we have to do for our community and for the Corn Palace and, and to better our place. I just, um, it's just part of what's going on in society and we gotta, we gotta keep moving forward too, so, um, that, that's where I'm gonna be at, I'm gonna support this tonight and I think it's something that we need to do as a community.
Well, and, and again, I'd say it, it isn't really a tax on the back end, it's, it's you have to back it out, it's built into the price in our case and, uh, a lot of our sales are still cash, uh, so we are dealing with logistics to do it. When you buy a concert ticket, you know, nowadays they're, like you say, 30, 40, 50 bucks, 100 bucks, whatever, depending on the concert, and you're paying by credit card at that level and it's just in there and, and it's, it'll be an odd amount, it'll be a ticket plus whatever the various taxes are and comes up to these odd numbers with pennies and all that and you pay it. We can't do that.
Do you think as time goes on, you will increasingly have, uh, a higher percentage that are paying with credit cards and debit cards? I know you told me the other night that it is about 50/50 right now, do you see that? Like, is it, if you are tracking it, is it on...
It'd be hard to read the future, I mean, I'm kind of surprised it's, it's at 50% right now and, and there again, I mean, we're hit with more expenses all the time and people ask why the prices go up. Well, here's, here's a good economics lesson and why. On the credit cards, we're paying the percentage on each credit card that we had to build into the price, we had to take a price increase there and very frankly, the bank told me, "Just increase your prices." And I already thought it was kind of at the max what the market would bear and the public would accept, uh, and yet we had to do it to pay our expenses. Uh, minimum wage went up and we pay well above minimum and we give raises, but you can't just say, "Okay, minimum's up and we're gonna leave our people the same who have earned raises over the years, you raise them as well." I, I mean, that's the fallacy of that, so all our expenses are going up all the time, um, and, and they continue to. Will they go up with credit cards? I hope not, because I'd like to get out of that, uh, percentage and it is, for us, it isn't the percentage as much. It's really a problem for us in that, and the McDonald's, the, no pun intended, low-ticket item, uh, is that, uh, there's a transaction fee. The percentage isn't as much as the base transaction fee, fee that you pay to the bank of whatever's negotiated from like 8 cents to 25 cents, depending on your volume and that kind of thing, that you're gonna pay. And we may have two credit card swipes, so I'm paying it twice. So when you use your credit card at the theater, you, you do it at the box office and then you do it in popcorn, that's another reason prices have to go up. So, I, I mean, if we feel paranoid and bombarded, it's because we've been bombarded with legislative price increases and technology price increases from every direction and this is just one more.
We have, we have, I was just gonna say, we have to keep moving on, so I was just wondering, is there anyone else in the public that has any, any comments they wanna add to this?
I won't take as much time as Jeff, if you'll let me make a couple of comments. Did you see the dust roll off this 30-year-old plan? And I only did it because it proves I'm really old. And there are several of us that actually remember developing this. And here's my point. Transparency and accountability. Here it is. We sat down with the Palace City Hospitality Association, two, two committees of the chamber, hospitality and tourism, Mitchell Development and the City of Mitchell Entertainment Set Tax Subcommittee. There was work on this, beginning in 85, finishing in 86. We submitted this plan and the council approved it. Uh, with, and it's been changed, now remember, it's evolved and changed. Over 30 years, you would expect that. But the first change is the one Jeff just mentioned, the removal of admission and ticket taxes. And the second was, we were estimating, using Department of Revenue numbers at the time, and by the way, they were right, was about $180,000 to $200,000 of revenue. This is 1988, right? Council approved it, it was referred to a public vote. We then had to run a campaign based on this... to a public vote. We then had to run a campaign based on this plan with the public that we would increase taxes on three specific, this is not general fund revenue. This is three specific businesses and potentially a fourth type. Restaurants, bars and lounges. One other, thanks. And that those folks would pay another percent on grocery receipts. So it was changed in the very beginning. Plus, the council capped the amounts based on a maximum of 200,000. And it started out, if you, if you took a look at this, was the Corn Palace would receive 40% or up to $80,000. And the CVB, we collapsed these other groups. Hospitality Association of the Chamber, Palis City, we collapsed and we created a CVB, a Convention and Visitors Bureau, to focus on tourism. And to focus on visitor development. And they were to get 35% in development 15 and regional marketing and attempt to, and I know there was a lot of questions about events. It was an attempt to get our 15-county trade area to come to us instead of Sioux Falls or elsewhere. That's what, it's about market penetration. So that plan was put into effect. It was voted on in the public and they said yes. And it was a significant yes. We were all pleasantly prized. I think it was in, we're gonna disagree, I, I don't have the election, but it was in excess of 60% of the people went to the polls and said, yes, we, we believe in the plan and we believe in the tax. So it was changed again. And what happened in 1993 was that the council came back and said, this tax, this is growing. You, we should cap, we should, here's what we want to do. We're gonna take another 10% off the top. And instead of 40% for the Corn Palace, we'll take 50. And everybody else, take a haircut. Right? So CVB, Mitchell Development took the largest cut and regional marketing. We had to find 10% in all of those groups, and we did. In 2002, this fund, this terrible fund that keeps growing, by the way, we're dealing with a good problem, right? The caps, the council looked at it and said, well, wait, that's growing. We should put caps on the amount. So they put caps on the amount and said you could come in on an annual appropriation basis and ask for additional amounts. And in 2008, they looked at it again and said, we'll take the caps off. If it grows, we all benefit. And this will be the fifth change, in which you're talking about adding tickets and admissions for additional revenue. Elements of the plan are just as important today, if not more so than they were 30 years ago. We have to penetrate the trade area. We need to keep those customers coming to us. The CVB and tourism development. Economic development is a tougher job today than it was 30 years ago because the high bars are up and we want higher paying and better jobs. And the regional trade area continues to be a key area. What's the plan going forward for the use of these funds? I think that you have a basis for that, but you should honestly tell the people that collect this tax, that run the businesses, how did this growth occur? What caused this growth? $200,000 in 1988 and over 700,000, depending on which number you want to use, 722 plus, what caused, what caused a half a million dollars? Let, let me tell you what that means in gross business. That's $20 million in 1988. That's in excess of $70 million in this industry today. What caused that growth? How did that occur? It just was gonna happen? I don't think so. I, but I'm paid to think that way. That growth occurred because of your commitment to this plan and its building tourism, building visitors, building this industry up. And the people that collect this, there's a promise to them that a good share of this money will help grow their businesses and expand that business in, in Mitchell. And I think that promise has been lived to over time. This was a good plan 30 years ago. It's a good plan today. And extra revenues, if you want to do extra things, then be candid about it in terms of setting the stage for a plan in the future. We may be your allies. We mentioned that, do you want to make improvements on Main Street? Then tell them that. And set it out and tell them what you want to do. I don't think we should make up something every year. And in fact, what would be acceptable is what we've lived under before. If there's a base amount, you feel that's capped, and we want to look at increases every year, and we want to see what we're using, and we want to do these new things, I think setting that forth is a good idea. And that's transparency. And that's accountability. That's what makes a difference. So the fact that this plan is, was here, nobody cares. I understand that. But it's lived for 30 years and you can't explain the growth by inflation alone. In fact, we did the numbers. That 200,000 by inflation alone would be about $400,000. That's not what you're collecting. You're collecting over $700,000. 300,000 of that is real growth in the hotel, restaurant and lounge business. I don't mind you having extra revenue. I understand Jeff's point. I saw what council did with it the last time. Right? And tickets and admissions. But if you're gonna have extra revenue, I think you need to say what you're gonna use it for and have a plan for the future. I appreciate your time and would stand by for questions. And yeah, this was typed on IBM Selectory. I was accused by my young staff members that perhaps this had to be chiseled out in little rocks. Um, back in 86, we didn't have much for computers.
I reckon it's the font style.
Jerry, I'm glad you did because the, uh, the younger staff team and some of the exec board who um, were in grade school when this was developed, looked at this and went, wow, is that bad? I mean, what computer did this? So there's my pitch.
Brian, I have a question. On the back, page 18, uh, you have the categories and it does include amusement, theaters, corn palace, events and all that.
Yes, absolutely. Those are, those were the two changes council made before the ordinance was adopted. Was, that is the draft in the plan. We included it. Jeff was over to make a pitch and we went, well, what do you think? Should we exclude that? And we were headed towards a public vote and we needed every vote we could. And that was one of them. And the, and the merchants as well. So we did include that. Also, also you note that there was no caps. And, and in the original ordinance, there were caps.
But you have included the $734,551 in your taxable sales and the revenue estimates of the two, that brought in the 204,000.
I don't know which, which document that's off.
I don't, it's on page 18.
I have it up here.
Thanks.
And I guess back then, it was 734,000 and that is that obviously the Corn Palace midway is included on that. Is that correct?
It says theater, corn palace, etc. That's why I didn't have the document there.
This is what happened, and let me be clear. This is the plan we submitted from these groups. It was changed by council because it was amusement theater and corn palace, et cetera. 234,000, I'm sorry, $734,000 was gross. And so that would have been uh, $7,000 in additional funds at that time. And we did come in over the next, in 88 and 89, barely remember, we did hit the 200,000, but not the 244.
So just, you know, when I look at that then, what, what that tells me, if you're telling me that all the other numbers were fairly accurate, that that $734,551 tentatively would raise um, $73,000.
7,340.
7,340.
Yeah, 1%. Point, point of reference, and I was gonna make this note.
In those, that year.
It is not lost on the businesses that collect this, that you collect two more cents on this. That the 722 or 750, whichever number's right, I'm gonna say 700. The city collects three cents on that. 3%, not one. So built into your general fund is the growth in this industry. So that restaurants and um, lounges and bars and the, and the third item, thanks, are being taxed at 3%. So the actual revenue that's coming from that today is in excess of 2.1 to 2.2 million dollars into the city revenue. You collect two other pennies. And you've experienced that growth in your general fund. That, that industry has paid dividends to you, is all I'm saying. It is adding to your general fund. It's one of the growth areas. And you know what it is. There's more hotels. There's more restaurants. There's more um, in terms of people coming to our community to enjoy those items. So the growth has been good. And you're working on a good thing, which is how do we handle this growth? Do I think we should grow unlimited, on an unlimited basis in our budget? No, I don't. But the plan that was in place made sense then. And I think elements of it still make sense today. And some of it is, you have new ideas and those would be welcome as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any other public comment? If not, I'd entertain a motion from someone one way or the other.
Mayor, can I make a clarification here? I just want to make sure, especially the general public watching online, um, understands that it's not changing any tax on lodging, alcoholic beverages or eating establishments that's already in place. The main conversation that came up, and we discussed it at the last meeting, was that it is the only tax that isn't discussed by the council annually. It has not been discussed by the council since 2008. We also could not find another city in the state of South Dakota that's appropriating tax revenue through ordinance annually without review by the governing board. That's what prompted the discussion, not wanting to make changes to the distribution or have other uses. But it was more about public accountability and transparency in that every year, the council looks at the collection of property taxes and sales taxes. And you talk about, in detail, sometimes excruciating detail, how those taxes are funded, or are spent. This is the only tax collection that that does not happen on. And that's where the conversation started in February.
And Toby brought that out numerous times.
Yes.
That the experts say, why aren't you doing this?
What came off?
I think, uh, Brian brought out a very good point is, is if, if we are gonna follow through with this tax, I, I think we need, or we at least to work to the public to say, what, what do you have in mind to use it for? How do you justify doing a new tax? And I don't know if, we're probably a little premature as they're working on the streetscape. But it, it certainly would make some sense. And I don't know, I know you can't bind future councils, but uh, we do, there, I would think there would at least be suggestions or, or this was the, the spirit of what we were trying to accomplish, is if we are gonna follow through with this, I think a perfect spot would be the streetscape that we're trying to develop. And that would be potentially part of our investment of going, going into it. We've talked about it. We know that the business owners down here are talking about possibly taxing themselves. Uh, so, and I don't know what we can and cannot do. And I'm sure Justin and Stephanie will tell us. But I certainly think we need to at least justify it.
What I would tell you is that that's what you do with every tax that you collect. Every year during your annual appropriation period, you as the governing body set the program of work for, for the city in the way that you, in the way in which you adopt your budget. You determine what capital projects are gonna happen. You determine how every tax dollar that we collect is going to be spent. So that accountability process happens during those budget hearings, when you're receiving requests from the public. Also, when you're having your public hearings at your first and second reading of the ordinance approving the budget, the public has the opportunity to come in and say either way how they feel that those funds are being spent. And they do that now. You just heard five presentations during your work session and you have a request for many more. And every year, I mean, you spent at least two of your work sessions dedicated to looking at what department heads wanted to do with tax funds. And as I said earlier at the work session, we started by cutting 793 before the council even started to review. And you guys cut another nearly $200,000 out of those requests. So that, that establishing that program of work and what projects and priorities the city as a whole has, that's what your appropriation process is for. And that's what you do as sitting as the governing board. You do that during your budget process when you approve that.
I, I think if I'm reading you correctly, Jeff, I, I think what you're trying to say is that we would want the public to know that if we expand the entertainment tax, that the entertainment tax is going to go, that, that bit, that segment, will go to the current segments that we are already funding, one of, one being the Corn Palace. Um, and we've just spent significant amount of money on the Corn Palace and we're not done. We're, of course, working on the lighting. And I mean, I certainly see that as a place where, you know, we, we need the funds.
I just want to say to you and Stephanie, thank you for your clarification for the home viewers, that this tax that we're talking about is not going to affect the lodging, the alcoholic beverages or eating establishments. We're talking about just the amusement tax. And uh, when this came up as to, you know, why we're doing this, we will have the accountability and the transparency as to how this money is spent. And there, there is one project that comes to my mind that I would definitely recommend where it should go. But that's gonna be up to the council to decide. That's why I'm gonna refrain from saying where I think it should go.
Well, and, and you're right, Bev, is, is, I, I think we want to make for sure that the realize that we do have, and Stephanie brings a good point out, is the fact that we, we've already got in place uh, some projects that, that are moving forward. The numbers, I, I'm struggling a little bit with the numbers. And I guess they're gonna be, if they pass as it, it is what it is. But what, whatever it ends up being, what, what I'm trying to say is, when I get to the point of maybe looking at Sixth Avenue or Streetscape or something that benefits uh, the areas where we're collecting the majority of, of the funds, should probably at least have uh, merit of supporting those type of projects. So whatever the number is, and if they come forward with maybe a Streetscape and we say we have no money, I don't think that's a very good answer. Is because what additional funds that we are collecting as a result of this, I would certainly think that the city should be willing and able to step up and say, these are new funds, these are new projects. And that's, and that maybe is where it should go. And again, who knows when that is gonna take place? Uh, I'm hoping sooner than later. But uh, when we're looking at 700,000, uh, and the, and the total was 20 million, and we went, what, about two and a half times that now approximately, uh, 7,000, you know, we're not talking anywhere close to um, 60 to 80 unless there was different definitions back then than it is now. But the point is, whatever the dollar amount is, I think we have to take that in consideration of, of the areas that it's, that it's helping out, where the majority of the tax is gonna be collected. So that was what I was trying to make.
I want to clarify my earlier statement when I said I, I would, I had a place where I think it should go. I should say, I, I want to clarify that and say, it's where I would like to see it go. And, and that's up to the council to decide where, where it should go. But uh, I, I definitely have a, a thought in mind where I would like to see it go. But that's gonna be up to the council if you decide to go ahead and, and pass this tonight. So from this point on, I think, uh, if there's any more further, there's no other further comment from the public.
I've got just two uh, brief things to, to point out here. Um, when we're saying that the council can appropriate this on an annual basis, that does not mean that the council has to change the amounts that it's actually appropriating. It just means that you have the option to do that on an annual basis. So you can decide to keep the exact same percentages this year. You can decide to keep the exact same percentages for the next 10 years. But this at least gives you the option to change those allocations.
It doesn't have to be percentage.
It does not. No, you can, you can designate specific dollar amounts as well.
So the percentage is gone.
So we're not gonna cut their legs off?
No, I mean, this does not affect your, the council's ability to continue that if it so chooses.
More than anything, it, more than anything, it requires you to have an annual conversation about how you're spending those taxes, which right now, we haven't done in the past at least eight years.
And if you go back to uh, Brian's point about wanting some accountability about what these funds are gonna be used for, that's built right into the state statute and it's built right into our ordinance that says, uh, funds shall be used for the purposes of land acquisition, architectural fees, construction costs, payments for civic center, auditorium or athletic facility buildings, including maintenance, staffing, operation of such facilities, and the promotion and advertising of the city, its facilities, attractions
Okay. If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion from someone. Okay. If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion from someone.
I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Is there any, any more public comment at all? If not...
Just to clarify the motion, that's to approve as proposed with both changes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Makes this a motion to approve the ordinance 2547. Is there now a motion for adoption of ordinance 2547?
Who do that? Second.
Discussion? Any more public comment? Roll call.
Charts.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Tronis.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Barrington.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Okay. Adopt, uh, adopt it then? And exec, now we move to, into executive session. Entertaining motion for the city council to enter into executive session as permitted by SDCL 1-25-24, preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?